Good evening, it's 7:03. We'll call the meeting to order. All members are present. We'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 2028, 21, and 21A. Do we have a motion?
So, second.
Made in second, it all favor? Unanimous? We have no minutes to approve this evening, so we'll begin with our 7 o'clock appointment. It's scheduled with Paul J. Neeland, and it's regarding a public hearing to request the transfer of the all alcohol license of Robert P. McCann Jr., doing business as Main Street Liquors, to Tucker's Liquors, LLC, doing business as Main Street Liquors, for property located at 355 Main Street, Unit 1. Ms. Neeland? If you want to have a seat at the front table, please. Obviously, the board has the benefit of the application that's before us. For those in the audience who might be watching on television that would like some more information, if you could summarize what you have here.
I own the property at 335, 337 Main Street. Bob McCann is currently the proprietor of a liquor store there known as Main Street Liquors. I've entered into an agreement to purchase his business, the license, inventory, furniture, fixtures, and equipment. The amount is stipulated on the application. I intend to operate the store along with my staff. We're trying to close the transaction as quickly as possible. I have for the record here, I can only submit this to, but the certified mail receipts from the abutters notices, do I give that to you?
Yes, please. Thank you.
The board should know that we don't intend to change the location or the configuration of the store at this time. It's basically, what we intend to do is, if anybody's been in the store in the recent past, the inventory is very low, and what we're intent is to re-inventory the store, remarket it, try to make it a going concern. It hasn't done well over the last few years.
With respect to the timing, I know in the paperwork at some point it said that you would anticipate that commencement under the new license would start January 1, and obviously, ABCC still has to review this application if the town approves it. Is that something we should count on, that if it's all approved, that January 1 is when you'd commence? You don't need any...
We're going to expedite this, although we don't have a lot of control over what happens at ABCC. But as soon as they approve, we will close within the next day or so. The funds are available to do that on very short notice.
Okay.
In the event that the ABCC doesn't approve this by year end, we may have to get Bob McCann to renew his license for the next year, so that there's no lapse in the license. I didn't handle the submittal of the application personally, but hopefully that was contemplated in this process. Okay, I just found out from one of my staff members that the license has already been renewed for 2013, so that...
Yeah, I don't think that's accurate.
Okay, well...
It could be that he's completed the application. That's a possibility. But we typically don't renew until the December meeting.
Okay, well, we're not going to let the application lapse because of the timing of year end.
Okay, understood. All right, what I'd like to do, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to the audience. But first, I'd like to go to the board. If there are any questions or comments, go to the audience, and then back to the board if need be. Do we have any questions or comments up here?
No, just any recommendations.
Sure, we can take them now.
We have a recommendation from Police Chief Mike Begonis. The Wilmington Police Department reviewed the application presented on behalf of Tucker's Liquor, DBA Main Street Liquors. The police department has conducted a review of all parties, and the entity listed and recommends approval of this transfer request. Another recommendation or opinion from the Building Inspector Al Spalding. I have reviewed the above-mentioned application, have no outstanding zoning issues. And then finally, from Shelley Newhouse, the Health Director, I recommend approval of the transfer of the all alcohol license of Robert P. McCann Jr., DBA Main Street Liquors, to Tucker Liquors, DBA Main Street Liquors.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, any motion or questions or comments not previously made from the board?
I guess, I don't hear any questions. I'll make a motion, then, that we approve the transfer of license to Paul Neeland, doing business as Tucker's Liquors, LLC, for the property at 335 Main Street, Unit 1.
A second, Ed.
Made in second, Ed. Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? So if you could see to it on that, the application for the renewal, so there's no gap there.
I'll take care of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
It's not yet 7:15, and that being the regularly scheduled time for our next agenda item, why don't we move to Communications, Mr. Hall, and then we'll return to our agenda items at 7:15.
The first item under Communications is correspondence from Phillips, the electronics provider, Phillips Lidle Air. The correspondence is notifying the town of closure of their business. This notice is sent by Phillips Electronics North American Corporation regarding the secession of production of Phillips Lidle Air facility located at 45 Industrial Way, Wilmington. The following information is provided to you as outlined in the Federal Worker Adjustment and Retraining Notification Act. They reference the address, the contact person is Debbie Valerio, the manager of Human Resources at Phillips Lidle Air. The Phillips Lidle Air manufacturing operation will cease production, and affected employees will be permanently terminated from employment with no future expectation of employment with Phillips. The termination of employment will commence on or about January of 2013, and will conclude in or about October of 2013. The company will provide employees with their termination dates as soon as possible.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, really sad to hear something like that happening in the town. It's unfortunate when anyone loses their job, but when somebody goes in the morning, and this is like reality what's happening in this country, and they wake up, they go to work, beginning the pay for that day, I believe, and getting sent home. Sad. You know, I just thought I'd mention that, you know, just, you know, I know the company a long time, just really sad, sad to hear that and see that. Thank you.
We have correspondence from National Grid. This is with regard to their herbicide application process in compliance with 333 CMR. This is a 21-day herbicide application notification to inform you that National Grid intends to selectively apply herbicides along the power line right-of-ways that pass through your municipality. As detailed in National Grid's five-year vegetation management plan and yearly operational plan, this treatment is conducted as a component of an integrated vegetation management program that also utilizes mechanical and natural control techniques. National Grid's current five-year management plan is posted and available for review. We have correspondence from Andrea Jackson. This is from the Director of Right-of-Ways at Mass DOT. This is with respect to the Route 62 and Glen Road intersection. The right-of-way Bureau of the Mass Department of Transportation Highway Division has been informed that the above proposal has received Department approval as a federal aid project. Accordingly, as a federal aid project, a secured right-of-way is required to satisfy design, construction, and future maintenance obligations for this project. Your community must acquire any and all rights in private or public lands necessary for this project to be undertaken, and your community is responsible for all the costs and effort associated with such acquisitions. Your community must also adhere to all applicable federal and state laws and regulations related to such acquisition. And then it details the process from there. Just as a point of information, the only easements that will require are essentially temporary easements to do some loaming and seeding, so this is a relatively minor issue for the town. Also, we have correspondence from Donald Onisite, Public Works Superintendent. This is directed to Walter Cubic from the District 4 Office of the DOT. Town of Wilmington is requesting additional Chapter 90 funds be approved for the design of Glen Road/Middlesex Ave intersection improvement project. A total additional estimate of $17,438.61 is being requested from MA Project Number This project involves engineering services for the improvement of Glen Road/Middlesex Ave intersection. The town is requesting these additional Chapter 90 funds be allocated to this project for increases in costs of subcontractors and for the cost of meeting new MDOT policies and engineering directives that have developed over the almost eight-year life of this project. Details from Green International are attached for your review, and a copy of the executed contract amendment with Green International is also included.
Okay, and at that, I think we can return to our appointment items.
I'm sorry, you sure you don't want to take up item six right now?
You're a step ahead of me on that, but we'll go back to the 7:15 appointment nonetheless, but thank you. Our 7:15 appointment is with Humphrey Skip Moynihan, Principal Assessor, and it's regarding a public hearing for the discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification.
If I could just, by way of introduction to the board, also with Skip Moynihan is our new assessor, Karen Rassus, so she's just going to be sitting in this evening and listening to the presentation.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
City, yeah, I thought you were going to handle this. Okay, as we do each time this year, the Board of Assessors has completed its work on evaluation files. What I'd like to do is go over the numbers with you, talk a little bit about the tax rate, and then answer any questions that you might have. As you can see from this chart, we have completed for fiscal year 2013 the triennial revaluation of the Town of Wilmington. The result has been that the residential sector has declined from $2,626 million to $2,569 million. It's a decline of about $56 million, or about 2%. The commercial sector has increased from $142 million up to $143 million, uptick of about 1.3 million. The industrial sector has declined a bit, from $672 million, down to $650 million, a net decrease of about $21 million. It should be noted that this decrease in the industrial sector, to a great extent, is site-specific. For example, Analog Devices purchased a rather large warehouse on Industrial Way, and then demolished the warehouse to provide a new entrance for their campus, their proposed campus project. So that was a $7 million deduction right there. There are a few other problem properties in town that we've had to address, so it's an indication of site-specific problems in the town, and not anything endemic in the industrial sector. The personal property class dipped slightly as a result of the revaluation, even though we had a phenomenal growth year in personal property, which I'll explain later. We'll take a look at the tax levy analysis. As you can see, in fiscal year 2012, our tax levy stood at $57,762,984. This year, we're proposing a levy of $63,285,679, an increase of some $5.5 million, approximately $3 million of which is attributable to the new high school construction. You will note that the levy share amounts, in 2012, the residential sector assumed 55% of the tax levy, and that continues into 2013, the residential sector assumes 55% of the levy. And in both of the years, the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes assume 45% of the levy. So that has remained stable. And I will point out to you that, over the past four or five years, the residential value, the residential portion of the value of the town, that the value of the town being $3,452,284,420. The residential portion of that $3 billion has remained relatively stable. The residential value is 74%, CIP value is 26%. However, the residential share of the tax levy, even though the residential value, even though the residences comprise 74% of the town value, they pay 55% of the tax burden. And the commercial, industrial, and personal property sector, even though it comprises 26% of the town value, they end up paying 45% of the town taxes. And as is consistent with our policy throughout the years, we have shifted the maximum amount that we could shift to the CIP class, affording the residential property owner the absolute best tax scenario that we could present. Now, how this factors into the tax rate computation is as follows. We're proposing a tax levy of $63,285,679. We have, the Town of Wilmington currently is valued at $3,452,284,420. If we use a simple calculation, we take the levy of $63 million, divide it by the town value of $3.4 billion, and we come out with what's known as an overall, or a straight tax rate of $18.33 per thousand. If we were not a classified community, meaning if we did not shift the tax burden at all, that would be our tax rate. We are, however, a classified community. We do avail ourselves of the maximum amount to shift onto the CIP class, so we take that $18.33 straight rate tax, and multiply it by 1.75 factor, which is the maximum allowed by law, and we come out with a CIP tax rate of $32.08. We take the reciprocal of that 1.75, which is the minimum residential factor of .742432, multiply it by the straight rate of 18.33, and we come out with a proposed residential rate of $13.61 per thousand. We are proposing, with our recommendation, that fees would be the 2013 tax rates. Residential rate $13.61, commercial rate $32.08. I would just like to point out another thing, and this really has to do, I guess, with the health of the town. When we look at the new growth analysis, in other words, you know, how much we are accruing year after year in new growth, which is essentially new construction, new personal property, that type of thing, you know, it's a barometer of the health of a community. If you look at this past year, for example, or this year, rather, 2013, our new growth figure was 1.1 million, which is very healthy. Last year, we had a little dip, it was 842,000. But if you look at the past 10 years, and we have a note here, that over the past 10 years, the average growth factor was just a little over $1 million. I might also point out that this year, that $1.1 million growth figure, 685,000 of that is attributable to personal property. All right? So that's the tail of the tape in a nutshell, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. I'll go back if over anything, please.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. I'd just like to make a couple of quick observations and some comments. I mean, it's unfortunate, given the way the economic climate is, it's unfortunate that there has been a decline in residential and industrial. However, commercial has increased, and that's a little message of saying, small businesses in this community, commercial property in this business, in this community has done a little better. And I think that is going to be the engine of the state in this country. When they talk about small businesses, it means something. So I think that's an upswing, an up thing in the town. I'm definitely going to support the tax assessment, because obviously, we're giving more of a shift, the minimum amount to the residential, as opposed to the commercial, industrial. You know, I just wanted to make that observation, and I'd like to make a couple of comments later, if I can, Mr. Chairman, but I think the bottom line is, once again, residents in this community is perhaps one of the lowest rates in the Merrimack Valley area. We've talked about that, and a lot of people get a good bang for their buck in this community. And we have millions of, what, Jeff, how much in free cash, about 10, 11 million?
11, 11.2.
11.2 in free cash. So the town is sitting pretty good, but we're kind of blessed to have industry and commercial in the community, and I'd just like to make those observations, and I'd like to make a comment later, Mr. Chairman, if I can. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Skip for the years I've been on the board, and years working with you. You've always done a nice job, and you always explain it, break it down pretty simple. It is what it is, taxes are what they are, and I appreciate all the hard work you've done over the years, and good luck in the future. And good luck. Well, thank you.
Hi. So I also wanted to echo what Lieutenant Smagliar did just state, and also to welcome you as well to the Town of Wilmington. So I do have a couple of questions, if I may. Just to restate what you have already stated, obviously, the CIP factor, but from a residential standpoint, it's $13.61, is that correct? So we're at $12.14 now, so it's an approximate $1.47 increase, and that includes the high school dollar value in there as well. Okay. On the packet that we received, there's the memo that was listed here on page two. I believe I know the answer, but I want to just pose the question, if I may. The sample taxes on Wilmington homes down the bottom, you know, obviously, you see the 300, 325, 349, then you see the taxes, you know, gradually increasing. Can you just take me through the increase on FY 2012, whether 441, 477, 413, 588? You know, logically speaking, you would think it would, each one would bump up in chronological order, but it doesn't.
In fact, I had to ask myself that same question, because I thought, why isn't that happening? And the answer is, the average assessed value for last year, you know, in other words, we're using sort of arbitrary numbers, 300,000, 325, and then we focus on the actual average assessed value. So last year, the average assessed value, for example, was 357,000, it's dropped a little bit.
Okay.
So that's why there's a difference there, okay? We're actually focusing in on the actual average assessed value at that point.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
To that point, if I can complement the question, well, let me start by saying thank you, and good luck, and all the good things. So I appreciate all the hard work, honestly. And through the years, I've learned an awful lot reviewing, there's a lot of numbers here, and it's not necessarily a strong suit of mine, but you've helped me acquire at least some level of knowledge and expertise, so I appreciate that very much. That being said, I'm faced sometimes, especially right around the time when residents get their tax bills, and I have a couple of friends who are, will give me some good-natured ribbing, who will say, "Mike, in this economy, my property values have actually gone down, but my tax bill has gone up." And, you know, they'll kind of joke with me, like, you know, "How come I'm not seeing a reduction in taxes?" And, you know, I formulate a response that I believe is correct, but rather than them hearing it from me, I'd love for you to maybe help the audience, and maybe me, have a better understanding of how property values can go down, but tax, the actual tax levy or the individual tax bill can go up.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably one of the most common questions we get, and it's probably one of the cruelest jokes that we can play on people. In other words, we're telling them, the value of your investment in this vehicle called the Town of Wilmington has dropped slightly, all right? But at the same time, your taxes are going up. And part of the reason for that is, the variable is the tax rate. I mean, our costs are fixed or increasing, okay? So regardless of what the value of the properties are, we still have to generate enough income to keep the town going. We have to pay teachers, and firemen, and policemen, and that sort of thing. So if values come down, the tax rate goes up to compensate for that drop in value.
And that makes perfect sense. At the end of the day, at the municipal level, we're where the rubber hits the road, and we've got to pay the bills. You know, we've got to keep the roads paved, and the trucks running, and those costs don't come down just because property values come down. And that has typically been my response, but I appreciate you raising that to our awareness as well. And I'm glad that Wilmington is in a fortunate position to be able to apply the classification shift, which keeps residential taxes manageable. And if we look at where Wilmington sits relative to many of our neighbors, we're in an enviable spot, relative to taxation and many other things. So we have, as long as I've been associated with this board, taken full advantage of that shift, and I'll be supporting doing so again this year as well. So thank you for your advice.
And one thing I'd like to point out, the valuation picture, I don't want to make it sound like it's gloom and doom, you know? Three years ago, in fiscal year 2010, when we did the last revaluation, when all was said and done, residential values had dropped 7%. We're seeing them drop, you know, 2% this year, but at the same time, we're looking at, this year, we built 27 new homes. Last year, we built 30 new homes. The year before, we built 28 new homes, all right? I would say that the real estate market in Wilmington is very healthy. We have some problem properties, and the same type of problem properties that every community has right now, okay? And those tend to tip the scales, all right? But in terms of single-family residential developments, we're going strong.
Again?
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the audience? Did you have another?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just make a quick point, then I want to just say something to Skip. I mean, obviously, nobody wants to pay more taxes, but at least when the vote does take place, we're going to be voting the maximum tax shift to the commercial as opposed to residence. So that would mean, if we did it the other way, it would be a substantial more money to the residents. And I wear a couple of hats. I own a small business, happy to support, giving the residents a break, have done it every year, and I think most of us have done it historically. And on a personal note, I want to say to you, Skip, that, you know, I've served with you for a long time, and I think you're a class act, and, you know, obviously, everyone's going to be, it seems like we're getting a lot of retirements this year, the manager now, the town assessor, but you've always been a gentleman coming to these meetings, and I can honestly say, some people may have had questions about their taxes. Your door has always been open to residents. If anybody wanted to come down and submit an abatement, they've had an opportunity to do that. And if they don't take that, then shame on them. You know, but I got to say that I've heard nothing but positive coming from your office, and hopefully, the new assessor coming in, I wish you all the best of luck, and under the new town manager, I think things are going very good, and I think we've done a decent job. And I just want to say thank you, Skip, you've been a class act, and I hope you all the best. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. I just have one quick question, and then a quick comment. The question is, at some point in the presentation, Skip, you had mentioned how the personal property value of the town had dipped slightly, but you made a comment that, but the personal property outlook in Wilmington is very positive. Can you just revisit that and tell me what you were thinking with that?
Yeah, that's sort of a conundrum, and I'm glad you brought that up, because... Yeah, that's sort of a conundrum, and I'm glad you brought that up because that's a very good point. You know, we, when we do a revaluation, we are required by law, for example, with personal property, to go out and relist all the personal property in town. Essentially, we deploy teams of appraisers. They go to every business in town, and they, they reprice every item of machinery, equipment, inventory, the whole nine yards. It stands to reason that in any revaluation cycle, you're going to see a certain level of depreciation that will set in, okay? At the same time, over the past couple of years, personal property, the new growth personal property has been a powerhouse for us. So, for example, this past year, we had, for example, Charles River Labs leased a new building. They put in $6 million worth of brand-new personal property equipment, all right? So that's $6 million worth of growth right there, all right? And we've had a number of new companies coming into town. So it's a new cash infusion. At the same time, what we're doing on a revaluation cycle is we're going out to every other business in town, and if, if the equipment hasn't changed, we have to necessarily depreciate it to some extent. So it's a, it's a twofold process. You've got new cash coming into town. It's been huge the past couple of years, 685,000 in new growth this year, 555,000 in new growth last year, an impressive figure for the year before. This year, it just so happens, we had to go out and, and do the right thing, and go to everybody's business, and if their property had depreciated, if you've got a forklift and it's 12 years old, we had to depreciate, you know. So that, that tempers it down. Very good. Thank you. And my comment was just to echo what's already been said. Thank you for your years of service and, and the fine job that you've done. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
At that, I would like to entertain a motion for the board to adopt a classification shift of 1.75 as recommended by the Board of Assessors, which results in the minimum residential factor of .742432 for fiscal year 2013.
So moved?
Seconded.
Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Gennales?
Thanks, Skip.
Thank you again, and again, welcome aboard. If I could just say one thing. I've known Karen for a number of years. I knew her as a child. But we've worked, we've served on committees of the Mass Association of Assessing Officers together. The Town of Wilmington is very fortunate to have a person of this caliber.
For that comment, we look forward to it.
Speak, Williams. Good thing. Okay. Eight o'clock appointment is with Frank West, and it's regarding the Toys for Tots program. Good evening, Mr. West. If you could introduce the two gentlemen with you and then give us a refresher on what we can do to help.
Okay. First of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to introduce Staff Sergeant Gotti from the United States Marine Corps. And actually, he has a presentation he'd like to make to both yourself and to our newly, new town manager, Mr. Holland. But before I begin, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Holland, also in the board of selectmen for picking Mr. Holland for that position, and congratulate Mr. Holland for accepting the position. So with that, I'd like to introduce Staff Sergeant Gotti to make a presentation to you both, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Staff, thank you for having us here.
Jeff, if you want to come on up?
This is a commander's award, and it says, "On behalf of the United States Marine Corps Reserve, I am proud to recognize the Town of Wilmington for outstanding achievement in support of the 2012 Toys for Tots program. These generous contributions have enabled us to help fulfill the Christmas dreams of our nation's needy children."
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Staff Sergeant Gotti to give a brief overview of the Marine Corps Toys for Tots program and how residents can contribute to the program, and conversely, how many of our residents can be recipients of the program.
Yes. You know, 65 years ago, our program started with one toy. And every year it grows to where, last year, we were actually able to distribute over 150,000 toys to needy families, needy children within Middlesex and Essex counties. And the support that we get from, from the Town of Wilmington, it's, it's very phenomenal. And it's, it's really a good way to, you know, give back to the community and, and take care of, you know, the people in our community. All the donations that we get as far as the toys and monetary donations goes back into the, the people in the town, in our community, with giving a Christmas to, to those children who might not have anything this Christmas or for the holidays. And again, it's, it's been phenomenal, the type of support that we get from Wilmington. And it's because of towns like, like these, you know, why Toys for Tots is, is so, it's, it's so effective in helping families, you know, throughout the holidays when they, when they need it the most. So I thank you guys for, for all the support.
And if I may, on the local level, first of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce my son, Frank West Jr., who's a, he's been doing this, involved in the program since he was born, literally. So he's kind of grown up with the Toys for Tots program. But the thing is, is that I want to say on the local level, we've got Toys, you know, Toys for Tots collection boxes in many of the businesses and public buildings here in town, including, and thank you again, Mr. Holland, but here at Town Hall, there's a, there's a box, there's boxes at both the Market Baskets in Wilmington and Tewksbury, Walgreens in Wilmington and Tewksbury. A lot of the businesses along the industrial way have boxes that they have for their companies. We have senior center, several of the schools in our town. So I again, wanted to, you know, thank the town manager and thank the Board of Selectmen for their continued support of the program. This Sunday, on a local level, we'll be doing as we have for the past 16 years, a photo with Santa Day at our office, which is West Real Estate at 386 Main Street, and that'll be from 12 to 4 this coming Sunday. And basically, what, what happens is, is that if kids want to come, have the, have a CD full of photos with Santa Claus, you know, we'll have some elves there, tons of refreshments. We'll also have AMP 103, used to be Oldies 103, now it's AMP 103 will be, come along with some Christmas Carol's holiday favorites, and a lot of prizes, that sort of thing. So it'd be a fun event, and certainly the board and manager, and obviously the residents are more than welcome to come if they're available. I'd also like to take this time real quick to thank the residents of the community, because, you know, what I always tell people is, is that they say, well, gee, Frank, you know, you help, you know, get a lot of toys in, in my family, and certainly the Marines, we get a lot of toys for needy families. We put out empty boxes, and somehow, by some miracle, these empty boxes get filled. And because they get filled, the Marines can, to do a great duty for the local community in, you know, making, making Christmas and the holidays a little bit brighter. And again, I want to thank the residents of the community and the board and everybody for, for that. So if you, the, the other thing also, if I, if I may, real quick, is that if anybody needs toys, which is obviously the purpose for the program, if they go into toysfor tots.org, which is the website, they can, there's an application process that they can go from there. And certainly, many of the local civic organizations in the area have distribution points that, that can supply them. And, you know, certainly, again, you know, we're local, we, you know, we, they try to keep everything within Middlesex and Essex County. And certainly, we know that there's residents here in Wilmington that are in need of, you know, a little holiday brightness. So if anybody needs it, that's wonderful. If anybody has any questions, they can call me. My home number's in the book, but I'll just leave it. It's 978-658-1754. They can call. We can talk anonymously, you know. So I don't necessarily, I don't need names or anything like that, but certainly, if there's any way that we can help facilitate getting toys to any needy, needy families, we're more than welcome to do that. So I don't know if the board has any questions. I'd be happy to entertain, or certainly Staff Sergeant Gotti, or, actually, actually, is there anything you'd like to add from a, oh, okay. So I don't know if the board has any questions of us?
Constructive criticism later at home, man. Thank you, all three of you, for coming in tonight, and especially to see young Frank, Frank Jr. Certainly, that's not uncommon here in town, that we have young people doing great volunteer work, but congratulations for being involved in that. Thank you to the Corps for continuously doing this work, and to Mr. West and your family and business. So we appreciate all the fine work, and of course, if anybody is in need, please take up Mr. West on that invitation. Anything else from the board?
Yeah, I just think it's another example of Wilmington stepping it up. We always, with volunteerism and donations, anything that anybody needs, Wilmington has always been right there. And of course, the Marine Corps for doing this for 65 years, you said, that's impressive. And I'd like to thank you, Staff Sergeant, for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just want to say thank you. It's all been said. So thank you very much. Really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Yeah, similar. Thank you, Frank and Frankie. Frankie, sorry, I don't know if you still go by that. Staff Sergeant Gotti, for your service very much. Thanks for being here this evening. It's unfortunate that, that we even have to have these programs. It's unfortunate that there are any children out there that may not have a full and, and complete holiday season, but it's a blessing that we have organizations like Toys for Tots, the Marine Corps, and so many other volunteer organizations around the community to step up during the holidays and through the year. So thank you very much. And I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but correct me if I'm wrong, I think we even talked about this the last year, was it's at this time of year that this comes to the surface, and we talk about Toys for Tots a lot, but you continue to do this, or Toys for Tots continues throughout the year for families that maybe have fires or other, other hazards in their family. So I don't know if that's something you want to raise again. It's not just a Christmas or just, just a holiday event.
We mainly work for, for the holidays, sir, but definitely all year long, if there's a family that is in need, we are open, you know, they are more than welcome to come to us for help. Again, Toys for Us, I mean, we generally work with toys, and, and that's pretty much it. But yes, sir, definitely all year long, if, you know, if anybody needs it, you know, if they're in need, we're definitely, our doors are open to help them out. We'll find a way to help them out with whatever else, you know, whatever they need help with.
It's beautiful. Thank you again.
So, behalf of our family and the Marines, I'd like to wish Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everybody here. Thank you very much.
And you. Have a good night. Public comments. Mr. McDonald?
Where the tax classification was on the agenda for tonight, could the board explain to the people in Wilmington, on a particular class or tax bill, like when they go down to the tax assessor's office, there's a sheet that they pull out with information. Could you explain about the site index to the people of Wilmington on that particular?
Well, to, you're the only one I hear asking a question. Do you have a question on that?
Yeah, yeah. Could you explain?
Well, I, I'd refer you to the principal assessor. That's what they're there for, is to explain the tax bill and what certain adjustments are for the valuation process.
Well, you people are going to be voting on the tax classification.
No, Mr. McDonald, we, we already voted on the classification. So
Right.
First of all, we held a public hearing. We opened it up for questions and comments. There were no questions or comments, number one. Number two, that specific question really is, should be directed to the principal assessor, who can explain all of that to you. I'm sure he'd be happy to.
Yeah. Mr. Newhouse, I understand that. Okay. The column that I have is, when you go to vote on a particular issue such as tax classification, and no one here seems to understand what the site index is, and I go to the board's attention that
You don't want this, McDonald?
Excuse me.
No, excuse me. You're out of, because you're out of order every meeting. Please move on to an issue that is in order.
Well, what I'm, one of the problems that I have is, when taxes go up, and
All right. Anybody else, you're out of order again. We're not going to take any more public comments.
I'm just saying that's just overstapping in the departments, Mr. Newhouse. And
You're out of order. Anybody else have any public comment? Okay. New business or committee reports?
Thanks.
Good.
I just want to mention this because I, I'm sure it's on the manager's important dates, but I just want to say this now. There's the Substance Abuse Awareness Night that's happening this coming Wednesday, November 28th, at 7:00 at the Wilmington Middle School. And I know it's being sponsored by the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition, specifically the Wilmington Board of Health, Wilmington Police Department, Wilmington Public Schools. I just want to support the event and convey it out to residents that this is, this is working together as a community to support 100% drug-free environment. And I, I'm, it's unfortunate that we need this. I know we've gone over this the last meeting, but I just can't stress enough, this is such an important community event, that I'm hoping that as many people that can attend as possible will do that. They do have babysitting there available for small children. They're encouraging children ages 12 and up, as well as adults, to attend. And I'm planning on being there, and I'm hoping to see as many people there as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Judy, for bringing that up. I too will be there with my family, and I would echo that. I hope that we'll see a very full house, just, if nothing else, for, to increase awareness of these issues and to hopefully learn some techniques or tactics to try to get ahead of it and, and conquer it. I want to also acknowledge and pay tribute to all the good folks that went to the Thanksgiving football game. Unfortunately, Wilmington did not prevail in the contest, but it was a great day. I want to congratulate all of the, the seniors who are finishing their football season. I wish them well in whatever endeavors they take on in the future, as well as all the band kids that are, that are finishing their season as well. So it was a beautiful day. It was a great Thanksgiving. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I also note that the next Board of Selectmen meeting is December 10th, and as has, as I had mentioned before, I won't be here for that, which I think means that I'm wishing you all happy holidays. So Merry Christmas to all, and I'll see you after that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Smaglia pointed out, the scouts we have in the rear of the room just wanted to acknowledge their presence and specifically welcome you and hope to see you back soon. Mr. Holland, important dates.
Yes, important dates. November 30th, Curbside Collection of Yard Waste. November 28th, as previously mentioned, the Substance Abuse Awareness Night, which will be at the Wilmington Middle School, starting at 7:00 PM. November 29th, the Yentel Farm Development Committee holds its meeting in this room at 7:30. November 28th, we have a brush drop-off at Old Main Street at the Redemption Center, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. December 1st is Breakfast with Santa. Also on December 1st is another brush drop-off at Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. December 1st, the Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony will be held at the Town Common. The event begins at 4:00. There's a free hayride for the kids, and should be a good evening. Also, on December 1st, the Women of Wilmington Festival of Trees will be taking place from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. December 2nd, and also that's at Villanova Hall. They'll also be holding it again on December 2nd, from 9:30 AM to 2:00 PM. On December 2nd, there's a Holiday Social at the Harndon Tavern from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. December 5th is another brush drop-off date from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. December 6th is the Santa's Workshop here, held here at the Town Hall, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. December 8th is another brush drop-off down at Old, on Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then, the Board of Selectmen's next meeting is December 10th, here at the Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM.
The motion adjourned. So moved?
Seconded.
Made in seconded. All in favor? Gennales?